Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Counselors Cabaseras.
Here.
Joseph Kamara. Stephen Kamara.
Here.
La Liberty LeBeau.
Here.
Long.
Yep.
Mitchell.
Here.
Ferrera.
Here.
Ponti. President Kadine.
Here. Will everybody in the chamber please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence.
Mr. President, could I request that the moment of silence be given to Mr. Hudner?
Yes.
Who we all know.
Thank you.
Mr. President, just in case people don't know who Mr. Hudner is, Mr. Hudner.
We all know.
Mr. Hudner.
Folks, folks, folks.
And I'm sorry for the disrespect from the crowd about a congressional.
Counselor, seat one, you have the floor.
Yes, this is a Congressional Medal of Honor recipient, somebody who fought valiantly in war, crash-landed a plane to save his buddy, and this person needs to be in all of our thoughts and minds.
Thank you, Counselor, seat one.
Thank you.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. Madam Clerk?
Sir President, the first item before you is in order that the sum of $488,000 be, and the same is hereby appropriated, for the EMS capital expenditures from the EMS stabilization fund for various equipment needed by EMS.
Counselor, seat one.
Mr. President, under, I just found out some information about this particular thing. I think that there's potentially a collective bargaining issue when it comes to this. I'd like to motion to table until we get more information about this.
Is the motion to table, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Counsel Kamara. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Could, Mr. President?
No discussion on table if there's a.
Did he say collective? All I want to know is.
Collective bargaining.
He said collective bargaining, okay.
On the motion to table, Counselors Cabaseras.
Yes.
Joseph Kamara. Stephen Kamara.
Yes.
La Liberty LeBeau.
No.
Long.
No.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
Ponti. And President Kadine.
Yes.
The second order that the sum of $300,000 be, and the same is hereby appropriated to the EMS capital outlay account from the EMS stabilization fund for the purchase of an ambulance and related equipment for the transfer M.I.H. division.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt was made by Counsel Mitchell, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion? Counselor, seat one.
Mr. President, because of the same collective bargaining issue, I am going to make a motion to table.
Motion to table was made by Counsel Cabaseras, seconded by Counsel Kamara. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
On the motion to table, Counselors Cabaseras.
Yes.
Joseph Kamara. Stephen Kamara.
Yes.
La Liberty LeBeau.
No.
Long.
No.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
Ponti. And President Kadine.
Yes. Motion carries.
The motion carries. Item number two is a communication from the mayor in an order allowing the Fire Department to accept a gift of concrete valued at $500 from the Fall River Ready Mix LLC.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt was made by Counsel Mitchell, seconded by Counsel Ferrera. Discussion? Counselor, seat seven.
I would just ask that a thank you letter be sent to Fall River Ready Mix Creek, Ready Mix LLC on Tripp Street.
Second.
Yep. Any further discussion?
No.
No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries.
Have a number of recommendations from the Traffic Commission to amend ordinances.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Move to ordinance.
Motion to refer to ordinance was made by Counsel Mitchell, seconded by Counsel Stephen Kamara. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries.
The 2018 budget of the Fall River Retirement.
Move referral to finance.
Motion to refer to finance was made by Richard Cabaseras, seconded by Counsel Mitchell. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries.
Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs, out of meeting held on October 23rd, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be granted leave-to-withdraw. This is a resolution requesting that the state delegation file legislation requiring physicals and drug testing for public employees.
Move adoption of committee's report.
Second.
Motion to adopt committee's report was made by Counsel Cabaseras, seconded by Counsel Ferrera. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion. Counselor in seat six is opposed. Motion carries.
The Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs, out of meeting held on November 6th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be forwarded to the full council for action, with Counsel Joseph Kamara abstaining and not voting. This is a resolution requesting that the administration transfer the Alfred J. Lima Quikashan River Rail Trail to the Board of Park Commissioners.
Move to adopt the committee's report.
Motion to adopt committee's report was made by Counsel Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counsel Mitchell. Discussion? Counselor, seat one.
Is this something that should be in form of an order, and that's through you, Mr. President, to my colleague in seat number three?
I don't think that it needs, it rises to the place of being an order. There may even be a question as to whether it's necessary at all, because there is some thought that by the state completing the project, that it automatically becomes part of the responsibility of the Board of Park Commissioners. So we just want to reinforce that, what we, at least some of us think is automatic. So I think a resolution should do the trick. I responded.
Yep.
Thank you, I yield.
All right. Any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries.
Item number seven is a proposed ordinance related to the King Philip Mills Overlay District for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Counselor, seat three.
I, considering that the October 31st date is now passed, the bidder has removed himself from the process, the building now is in limbo as to what is next, I would hesitate on our establishing a overlay district that might in some way affect the disposition of this property. I'm hopeful that it doesn't end up being a city-owned property, that it can be put quickly back on the rolls and maybe go out for auctions with a professional auctioneer. So I would ask that this be referred back to ordinance committee. So my motion is to refer back to ordinance committee.
I'll second that.
Motion to refer back to ordinance was made by Counsel Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counsel Mitchell. Discussion? Seeing none, Counselor, seat four.
I would like to hear what the city administrator has to say about that. If there's any timeline or if.
Motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules was made by Counsel LeBeau. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries.
Thank you, Counselor, and I do appreciate this opportunity. We know that there's going to be additional action taken to dispose of the property, and the overlay district allows for market-rate housing to be utilized on the site, and this is something that the neighbors have advocated very strongly for, that this is the additional use that they'd like to see available on the property. And I would just suggest that if that zoning is in place, it's certainly going to increase the marketability of the property and the disposition of the property for development, because it would be development that is consistent with what the neighbors want, and we know that there is going to be some zoning change required. By creating the overlay district, they still have to go to special permit, so there's still a public hearing process. But I would suggest that anything we can do to increase the marketability of the property, when we decide to go out for the next competitive process, is certainly an advantage to us, and we'd like to expedite that process, so.
I would agree. Would it expand the RFP? You think it will expand the possibility of more bidders?
Absolutely, Counselor. I mean, the more, clearly, right now, the zoning is industrial, and so to the extent that we add an additional use, even though it's by a special permit, we're expanding utilization of the property. I think that a developer coming in wants to know what the property is going to be able to be utilized for, and the more options we give someone, the higher the probability that we'll get someone to come forward and bid on the property. So I would suggest it's a tool and something that would certainly help us in disposing of the property moving forward.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, seat three.
Yeah, I don't, I really don't have any problem in adopting this. I guess I would just like to have more discussion now about where do we go from here. I thought referring it back to ordinance is not going to necessarily tie it up to any great extent. Hopefully, in two weeks, he can come back to the council with a favorable recommendation. I only have maybe some minimal input into this process, in that I did have a discussion with somebody who is a professional and local, he's local, from a very local family, who had suggested last time around that it was too bad that it wasn't done differently, because he had bidders that he thought would have bid on the proposal, had there been prior knowledge that a bid lesser than the anticipated bid was available to other developers. So with that having been said, I just don't want to do anything that might in any way prevent the potential for an auction to again go forward, or some other sale method other than an auction. And I don't know personally whether adding this overlay is going to actually benefit a potential buyer, or are there reasons why it might not, or it might serve as a disbenefit to some potential buyer. You had mentioned it being an industrially-zoned area. Maybe a bidder out there wants an industrial-zoned area, and if it were changed to residential, would that then cause an industrial bidder to say, "I don't really want to have to go for a variance to bring it back to an industrial zone"? So I just, I guess it's just really more about not knowing what options might exist. So I don't want to finalize it into stone, which is what today we do, because this is final, final reading and enrollment, that this will finalize it, and will that put up a barrier? Why can't we wait a couple of weeks and have a full-blown discussion in ordinance committee about possibilities?
Okay, well, the nice thing about an overlay district, Counselor, is that the underlying zoning remains intact. So if someone did want to do industrial, they still have that full ability to do that. This just adds another option to them. It overlays, it lays on top of the existing zoning. And again, it's for market-rate housing, it's something that I think the neighbors have been very clear, they would really like to see on the property. So we're just trying to give every incentive. And we are interested in timing. I mean, we do want to move this process along.
Okay.
I just hesitate about a further delay, the winter's coming. It would be nice to be able to.
Okay, you provided me with a convincing argument. I withdraw my motion.
Motion withdrawn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to adopt, second reading.
Second.
Motion to adopt, second reading and enrollment, was made by Counsel Kamara, seconded by Counsel Mitchell. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries.
Whereas Duro Textiles closed approximately two years ago, whereas this shuttered building is within close proximity to the Matthew J. Cuss Middle School, whereas there are approximately 800 students that attend this school, and whereas the city of Fall River has begun foreclosure proceedings for the non-payment of taxes, and whereas the city has had its challenges disposing of shuttered properties, especially those that pose a threat to the safety and security of its residents, now therefore be resolved that the administration be invited to a future meeting of the Committee on Finance to discuss the status of this possible tax title property, and be it further resolved that the Committee on Public Safety convene with the school department, fire department, administration, and concerned parents to prepare an evacuation plan for the Matthew J. Cuss Middle School, should there be an emergency at the former Duro Textiles property.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt was made by Counsel Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion? Counselor, seat four.
I would like to propose an amendment to this, the peace of the Committee on Public Safety convening with the school department, fire department, administration, et cetera. I've spoke with the school department. Each school in the district already does a fire drill, shelter in place, and an evacuation plan, and speaking with the school department, Cuss specifically has already drilled with police and fire, so they're already, they're already doing this.
So what's, did you say you want to make an amendment?
I would amend it, I would delete the last paragraph, because that's already been ongoing.
Second. Motion to delete the last paragraph of the resolution was made by Counsel LeBeau, seconded by Counsel Stephen Kamara. Discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries.
Motion to adopt as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended was made by Counsel Mitchell, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries.
Whereas the Ralph M. Small Elementary School was named to honor the work and achievements of Ralph M. Small, and whereas the Ralph M. Small Elementary School was renamed the Mary L. Fonsica Elementary School, now therefore be resolved that a portion of Wall Street, from London Street to Locust Street, be renamed Ralph M. Small Way in his honor.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt was made by Counsel Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Ferrera. Counselor, seat six.
I'd just like my colleagues to know that there'd be no address changes, because from London Street to Locust Street, the only building on there is the school. On the right side going north would be Father DeFerio Village, and on the left side would be Oak Village. So it's all housing property, so there would really be no address changes required. But at the same time, it would honor a person that did so much for our school system, that our forefathers decided to honor him by naming a school after him, and all as I'm asking is that where the school is be on, be named for Ralph M. Small, so that his name has some significance in our community. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor, seat three. Counsel Kamara?
Yeah, I have certainly no problem with doing something to honor Ralph M. Small. I, I think the library at that school may be named the Ralph M. Small Library, but I am concerned about the changing of a street name, because I do think that sometimes it does have ramifications. I just would like more assurance that none of the properties that are on that street are named with the address Wall Street. Do people that get mail at Father DeFerio property, do they get their mail delivered to an apartment number of Father DeFerio property?
Yes.
Or do they get their addresses on Wall Street? The same with Oak Village. Is there any? So I, not knowing for sure, that's my only concern. And I did ask through the chair to Counselor in seat number one, what is the address of the Mary L. Fonsica School?
It's 160 North Wall Street, Fall River, Mass. 02723.
North Wall Street.
North Wall Street.
So was, is that, is that between Locust and London?
Yes.
Right, so there isn't, there's also a street named North Wall Street, as opposed to Wall Street. So I think there is some reason to question whether or not, would that, if you're considering the Ralph, the Mary L. Fonsica School to be on Wall Street, it's, it's not. It's on North Wall Street.
And that's according to Fall River Schools.
Would that address change to, to Ralph M. Small Street, if it's currently North Wall Street? Because the resolution doesn't speak to that.
I believe that if you look at this.
So I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you.
That's my concern.
Counselor, seat three, I mean, four, I'm sorry. Counselor, seat four.
I was going to ask the same question, and I was going to ask if the Traffic Department needs to approve this at all, because we're renaming part of a street.
I'm sure, I mean, this is a resolution. I mean, I think it's, we're probably better off with.
What is the process from here?
If there's some questions going forward, I think we should just refer to.
Refer to traffic.
Public safety or traffic. I mean, about public works, I'm sorry. Counselor, seat three.
Yeah, I just, isn't usual, isn't, don't we have a procedure on dedications and memorials that we refer it to the planning department for a recommendation, and then it comes, and I would ask that through the clerk. Isn't there a procedure for memorials and dedications?
We do have a procedure for naming.
I'm sorry?
We do have a procedure for naming. It does go to the planning board for research.
Okay, so I would move to refer this to planning board.
Second.
You want to do that before making the amendments to?
Yeah, I would.
Just confirming.
Let them look at it and send it back to us.
Motion to refer to plant, planning was made by Counsel Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Ferrera. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries.
Whereas within the Fall River School Department, there is initial progress toward building an estimated $260 million Durfee Number Three High School on Elsbury Street, whereas there is growing concern about the city of Fall River's taxpayers and rent payers being able to produce the revenue to meet this additional financial obligation. Whereas a major concern when the Elsbury Street location was selected for Durfee Number Two High School, currently serving the students at what is officially named BMC Durfee High School of Fall River, that it was not located in a central location, more equally accessible to students living in the Maplewood South End and other neighborhoods that are away from the population center of Fall River, and moreover, are away from the Elsbury Street location. Whereas the more central location easily accessible to the downtown bus terminal and the Alfred J. Lima Quikashan River Rail Trail, which eventually will be connected to other rail trails and bicycle paths throughout the city, would make bicycle transportation as well as sort of bus transportation a more viable option for students to get to and from Fall River's only public high school, both for regular school day activities as well as after-school extracurricular activities. Now therefore be resolved that the Fall River School Department's Building Committee, considering a Durfee Number Three, put a moratorium on its plans until a full and well-publicized public hearing and presentation is provided to the city council, and at the city council, to the entire city of Fall River, so that it can be determined if Elsbury Street should continue to be the venue for Fall River's only public high school, and be it further resolved that any vote scheduled for the bond issue to fund a Durfee Number Three High School be held at a regularly-scheduled November election to assure maximum voter participation in the decision relating to this more than a quarter-billion-dollar public project.
Move adoption of the resolution.
Motion to adopt was made by Counsel Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Cabaseras. Counselor, seat three.
I presented this resolution after some great thought and some reflection, and I know folks are a little bit leery of history, but since I was a member of the school committee when the final appropriation was voted to open up Durfee Two, and it was with some concern at that time because of all the problems that had gone on with the construction of Durfee Two, I never in my lifetime thought I would be voting someday on whether or not I would spend more tax dollars on Durfee Three. I'm a proud graduate of Durfee, I'm a member of the Durfee Bells Preservation Society, the Durfee Alumni Association, and there was unanimous opposition to the proposed building on Elsbury Street, because what it would do to the Durfee memorial that exists on Elsbury Street, the intent is to remove the bell tower, scrap it, in essence, and the Bells Group is definitely opposed to that, and they're going vehemently oppose it. There's also some concern on the part of the Alumni Association, but they have not taken any stand or position. But I do think, again, reflecting back on those days, that there was concern, and it's somewhat interesting that I was counting that there were seven members of our council that live in basically the north end of Fall River, north of Bedford Street. And back then, when the site was selected at Elsbury Street, there were also six or seven council members that lived in that neighborhood, and the superintendent lived on New Boston Road. And even though Counselors Danucci and Guardette and John Madeiras all said the school should be in a more central location, and at the time, they were looking at the stadium site at Gretland Park as being a more central location, and even back then, as a, as a younger man who wasn't in public office yet, that made sense to me. We should have a central location for our public high school. Now, the committee, I've been attending their meetings on occasion, and I did attend a meeting this past Thursday, and I presented to them my very strong interest, and they're looking again at a center-city site. I even suggested to them a possible center-city site, and they are not opposed to looking at a center-city site. So I'm hopeful that if the council adopts this tonight, that it will just bring to the council a full discussion of this issue, because it probably is going to be no more important issue that I'll face in my tenure than the possibility of spending more than a quarter of a billion dollars on a new school. And if we're going to do it, let's do it right, and let's do it at the right location. So I'm not, at this point, saying let's not move forward with Elsbury Street, because that may very well logically be the place to go forward, but at least let's have a full-blown discussion on this issue as it relates to Fall River's educational future, because I believe that there can be ramifications beyond our singular public high school that might affect other school buildings as well. I did raise some issues today about the Talbot Middle School, but that's sort of a separate entity. But I do think that a full discussion about Durfee Three should be held in this chamber, so that the maximum number of people will be aware of it. There have been public meetings, I'm not denying the school department's good work, and this, and this committee's good work, but I would bet that most people have not been privy to the actions at those, those meetings at Durfee, and I think having a public meeting here would be very important. So I ask my colleagues to support this. Thank you. I yield.
Counselor, seat one.
Thank you. First, somebody who's on the building committee, I have a couple of questions for. I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules, so Mr. Pacheco could come down.
Motion to waive the rules was made by Counsel Cabaseras, seconded by Counsel Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries.
Welcome back, Mr. Pacheco.
Nice to have you here, sir.
Once you thought you were out and we pulled you back in. So what is the timeline if we did decide that we were looking at a central location? Can we do that at this point in time?
If I could just take a couple of minutes to give you.
Please.
Where, where we've come from, where we're at today.
Please do.
2013, we applied for, we sent in a statement of interest to build a new Durfee High School. It was denied. It was denied after a walkthrough that the MSBA did. It was about 15 to 17 people who did that walkthrough, and at the time, the application was for a renovation project. They walked through and said, "Absolutely not. They're not going to put money into that building, that the, the physical layout of the building would be very difficult to bring up to today's standards as far as program, programmability, and logistically to get around in that building, the upgrades would be astronomical." So they told us that we should reapply with a statement of interest and broaden our request to include renovation addition, renovation new or new.
Okay.
And we did in '14, and on, on January 14th of 2015, we started the next phase, which was the eligibility phase of, of this project. On November 18th of 2015, we were invited to get started in the following module, which would have been feasibility. January, we were, we started that, that study, actually, the end of, the end of December, beginning of January.
And what year was this?
This is '16, so the end of November of '15 into the middle of January, we started this feasibility study. We've had, building, building committee was formed, was actually formed by Mayor Flanagan, Mayor Sutter, and Mayor Correa. Four different committees by three different mayors was formed, and the current committee is almost the exact same committee that originally was, was formed by Mayor Correa. The, the makeup of that committee is, I think it's 17 members, of which we have, the co-chair of that, of that committee is Counsel Joe Kamara. I am a co-chair with him. We have business leaders, we have two school committee people, Mark Costa and Dr. Costa, and State Representative Fiola, since the current school is in her district, and a variety of, of school personnel and city personnel. Chris Gallagher is on the building committee by statute. So that committee has done anywhere from 15 to 17 meetings, regular monthly meetings. So that committee has done anywhere from fifteen to seventeen meetings, regular monthly meetings, and sometimes some special meetings depending on when we needed votes. We've had three public hearings, of which they've been held at Durfee High School at different phases of the operation. The school committee has had two presentations, taking them into where we are and where we're going. The process with MSBA is very time-sensitive. So from the date of November eighteenth, the clock starts ticking, and we have thirty months in order to produce a project funding agreement.
And what was the date that the clock starts ticking?
So the date is November eighteenth of two thousand and fifteen, so we have until May nineteenth of two thousand and eighteen to produce the project funding agreement. Basically, what we need to have in place by the nineteenth, by the nineteenth of May next year, we need to have a schematic design done, which we are just about finishing up right now. We need to have a funding mechanism in place. And then MSBA will sit down with us and activate that funding agreement along with the mayor, and the project would go into its next phase, which is full design and construction. At the current pace, we're probably looking at a May, June, or July start of construction in nineteen, I'm sorry, and a completion in twenty-one.
Two years.
Yes, and that would be for the, the current project sits as a new construction and a renovation. So the new construction would be a three-story academic building with a CTE, a career technical education portion on the first floor of the building, front and center, as opposed to the back of the building where it is located now. It'll be showcased in the first floor of the building. There is a, the building is kind of an L shape. In the L shape would be a couple more CTE programs. The building is separating the auditorium, the current auditorium and the Performing Arts Center, from the main building. Due to the topography of the land, we can't connect the auditorium and the fieldhouse and the new building. So the choice was made by the Building Committee that the fieldhouse was a better choice to connect to the building, and MSBA would fund at a very good reimbursable rate the new auditorium within the building. So the new Durfee would have a seven hundred and fifty-seat auditorium. It will have, obviously, all of the amenities that a new high school would have. And then there's a connector that would connect the fieldhouse and pool area to the main structure. That's currently where we're at right now.
Now, I hear my colleague in Seat Number Three, and I think he brings up some good points. Has there been some consideration to use a central location in the city?
The committee was charged, MSBA will not allow you to just say you're going to build the building in one spot. That is not part of the feasibility study.
Okay.
So in the feasibility study, all of the programming pieces, the space needs, the amount of students enrollment, all of those items are looked at in the feasibility study. The MSBA would be the one deciding how many students are going into that building through their algorithms of birth rates, current enrollment, the amount of charter schools, the amount of parochial schools, all of those items are taken into play. So the current enrollment at Durfee is a little over twenty-two hundred students. The new building will be built for twenty-five seventy, MSBA deciding that, not the city of Fall River. The current building was sized for about thirty-eight hundred students, and the square footage of the old building is five thousand, sorry, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand square feet. The new building is a little under five hundred thousand, right at the five hundred thousand mark.
Okay, and were transportation costs considered when considering the location for?
Sure, absolutely. So all of those things, traffic patterns, transportation, onsite parking, the square footage of the parcel.
And I figured as much. So what did the transportation costs look like if there was a downtown or a central facility as opposed to the Ellsbury Street facility?
So the students currently at Durfee are transported through the SRTA system. The students are either purchasing vouchers, or they are, depending on their ability, would be given vouchers.
Sure.
Their Charlie cards. So they're good for not just getting to school, but they're good for if the student has an after-school job they need to get to. So they're given those cards, or those cards are purchased. They are trippers, so they're not going to the station to change. They are direct routes, they're being picked up. There are extra buses put on twice a day to and from school. The only time students do a transfer is if they're either coming before those tripper buses or after those tripper buses in the morning, and the same thing in the afternoon. If they're going home on a regular bus, on the tripper buses, they'll be going directly home. On the buses that kind of would run late, that's a regular route, Ellsbury Street is a regular bus route, so those students who would be after the tripper routes would go to the bus terminal and then take a transfer if they needed to.
And who bears the burden of that cost? It's not SRTA, right?
The city bears the cost of the busing, yes.
So what's the cost difference, or do you know the cost difference between Ellsbury Street and if we had a centrally-located facility?
I don't off the top of my head. I can tell you that the SRTA system of transportation is much cheaper transporting than transporting by school bus. We do have students who are transported by school bus to Durfee, but the majority of the students with the, in the vicinity of about eleven hundred students a day are transported by bus.
And would the SRTA system still exist in the event that we had a centrally-located facility? Or would more of an SRTA system exist in that case?
If we had a central location close enough to the bus terminal, I'm not sure that we would be responsible for a second trip.
That'd be great.
So students would, may, I'm not saying they would, but I'm saying they may, depending on if it's the distance that we require transportation for. If they're within that distance, then we may not have to transport them a second time.
So let me let you know where I stand right now in this. I think that when I hear my colleague in Seat Number Three's proposal, and I've heard him talk about not just this proposal, but kind of the vision in depth, he's the first person who I've heard talk about not only what to do with Durfee, but what to do with where we should relocate Diamond because they deal with overcrowding, and what we should do with the new Talbot, or fixing the issue with Talbot. I got to commend him, because I haven't heard anything like that yet. And he's trying to address multiple problems at this point in time. And this proposal is one piece of a larger puzzle. And granted, it's coming out of, it's basically words at this point in time, but I think if we develop a committee and we put this together, we might be able to come up with a long-term hundred-year plan. And I think it's a conversation that we need to have. And granted, we are danger close to that deadline, we need to have this conversation quick if we're going to have it. But I'm compelled to support something like this. Granted, we amended it a little bit in order to be able to not make it as harsh, but I'm compelled to support something like this. And we figure out what a central facility looks like, we work with you in order to be able to make sure that something like that happens, so we don't repeat the mistakes of the past. Because if we have the potential to reduce, to reduce transportation costs, if we have the potential to allow kids who are centrally-located in the city the ability to be able to walk to school, that could make all the difference in the world. And plus, giving Diamond access to a larger building, giving Talbot access to a larger building, a more up-to-date building. I think it's genius, and I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, did you state that for the May nineteenth or the May deadline, we have to have funding in place?
Yes, so.
So does that mean an actual vote taken to have funding allocated?
If that is the case, depending on where the funding source is, so if it's a combination funding source, we would need to have that process in place. Now, I'm going to-
So potentially a special election if we're doing debt exclusion?
Yes, yes. I can just read you this, there is one portion of this in the MSBA definitions about excusable delay. She'll mean a delay of the feasibility study that either is solely because of a natural event that is not preventable by any human agency, or a reasonable determination from the authority which to be excusable. So basically, for instance, if we were to, it took us a little over a year to get to where we're at today, which is the beginning part of the feasibility study, the programming, the size of the building, the location on the site, the geotech work, the schematic design where we're at right now, the mapping, the solid mapping of what the building will look like. All of that stuff has happened in just about thirteen months, fourteen months. And in that was the looking at other sites. So we visited five sites, sites which were large enough to house all of the needs of the school. It was important that we didn't add to, just as we're talking about transportation, if all of our sporting events practices included were to be held at a different site, then we would be busing students from a location back to a location where we would have the facilities. There are not many facilities as big as Durfee High School's current facility, which is seventy-eight percent of itself.
I appreciate that, I just want to recognize some of the councils. But so the May nineteenth of the May deadline is actually hard, having an actual vote taken place if it requires a ballot question.
Right, so there is a time, there was a time, a tentative timeframe that was put in place that the election would be in early March. The referendum vote would be in early March.
Okay.
Which would allow us time to do the rest of the work before May nineteenth.
Perfect. Council on Seat Four, Council of Bell.
You said, because you heard a lot of talk about a possibility of a renovation at Durfee, and you said fifteen to seventeen people did a walkthrough, and they said absolutely not to the renovations. Can you just give me an idea of who those people were, like?
So the majority of the people were MSBA. The executive director of MSBA, the facility planning person from MSBA, a designer slash architect, MSBA, programming people from MSBA, and I want to say two other individuals who were in, not necessarily capital planning, but probably would be handling the items that we did in feasibility study. So I'm not quite sure what their titles were. They did the walkthrough along with the mayor, Mayor Flanagan, the principal at the time, which was Mr. Marshall. I'm trying to think of who else. There was quite a few people. I did the walkthrough along with Chris Gallagher, and I'm not sure who else was present, but-
They said absolutely no to a renovation.
They said that the design of the building was poor to begin with. And the fact that it was laid out so spaciously made renovations and current programming norms very, very difficult in that building. So as a construction person, there's nothing that we can't renovate. Getting the participation from the MSBA is their decision, not ours.
So they just wouldn't be on board?
So they wouldn't be on board. There is nothing to say that the city of Fall River couldn't take on the eighty or ninety million dollar renovation project to fix that building up, but you'd still have that building, it would still have the programming issues that they said we couldn't get around. They're absolutely right. We would still have some of the other limitations that the building has. And I say programming, but I mean the adjacencies. So you may not be able to put all of the particular disciplines together, or you may not be able to mix those disciplines up. You may have the current situation where everything funnels to one area, lunchtime for instance. So some of the biggest causes of discipline issues or conflicts happen because everything is being funneled into one area from all kinds of areas. We have students who, you know, have trouble getting buses because getting from one end of that building to the other is a little bit of a chore. And locker use today is not what it used to be, because some of the lockers are so far away from where they need to be that they're not anywhere that they can get to in the middle of the day. So they pack their bag and they go off for the day, and sometimes never return back to their locker, or never went to their locker to begin with. So those are the kind of issues that MSBA capitalized on when they were going through the project with us.
Thank you. You said that you, this group has had about fifteen to seventeen meetings, those are all open to the public, correct?
They're all posted on the school website, they are all open to the public, yes. And we've had people there, various reasons, coming to the meeting.
And can they speak?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then you've also had three public hearings?
We had three public hearings at Durfee.
At Durfee. And they can speak at that?
Absolutely. Where they're encouraged to.
Okay. If this was to happen, actually, let me back up. Can you share which other sites were considered? I was surprised to hear that there was five, that we had that much space.
None of them had that much space.
Okay.
So none of the sites we looked at had that much space. None of the sites we looked at weren't without their own costs. So MSBA would not participate in the demolition of Durfee High School if the site that Durfee High School is currently on isn't used for the new construction. That's one piece.
So that was going to lead me to another question, then what do we do with the old Durfee that's sitting there?
So if there was another purpose, and Councilor, with all due respect to Council Kamara, because the ideas, there was nothing wrong with the ideas. There is nothing wrong with the process that he's speaking about. And I went with him and we looked at the properties. I think it's extremely long-term, it's not something that can happen right away. MSBA will not get involved in any property and put funds aside for any property that you don't currently own. So if there's any eminent domain or any purchases, that stops the funding piece. You have to own what you want to build on, they're not going to sign an agreement. So some of the drawbacks of the property we did own that we were looking at, or some of the areas, one of them was the Duro site. The Duro site's about forty acres, of which I think thirty of them are buildable. That's on the upper site. The lower site's a much smaller one, near Cuss. But again, the cleanup on both of those sites is going to be extremely expensive. And at the time, the city did not own those sites. The, we looked at the building that Waua was in. Again, a couple of issues that we would have to overcome. One, the fact that the river runs under it is a good-sized one, since Durfee doesn't have a rowing team, I'm not sure if that would come in handy, but-
But then there's no space for fields, or?
There would be no, no. So we have the parking lot across the street, which is sizable, but I think the two properties combined was less than a quarter of the size necessary to put the athletic fields on. The current site, we're having a difficult time fitting the athletic fields on because of the topography of the land. We're having a very difficult time with the fact that from the floor of the gymnasium to the floor of the auditorium, there's a forty-five-foot difference in height. So to make that rise handicap-accessible is almost impossible without a series of ramps and something that would make it, not aesthetically pleasing, but it would also make it very difficult for someone to get from one place to the other. And then one of the sites was the Industrial Park, which is one of the few places that have land. But again, we would be moving further north with no walkers whatsoever. So that would be a full transportation piece. And again, it would be subject to, it was land we didn't own. It was the, I guess the ability to purchase the land was there, but that was a cost that we don't currently have. So the site that was chosen- So the, the site that was chosen was the current site because we didn't have the purchases.
Was there a fifth site?
Nope. I, for the top of my head, I can't come up with that, but I, I was told that there, I'm sorry, I can remember there was five sites. And that's in the, in the documents, so I can, everyone can have that. I just don't have those documents with me tonight. But they are accessible. They may actually be online.
But there were sites in the middle of the city?
As far as I can remember, there were five sites. And then the current, the incinerator site was looked at by the architect along with their site professionals for its feasibility, but not as full-blown as the rest.
So there has been work done on other sites to see if other sites would work?
Yes.
If this was to happen, would the committee essentially have to start over?
I, we would run out of time with MSBA. This would not be something, there's no way we could do what we need to do in the amount of time that's left on this particular piece. I, I can't tell you that MSBA would say, you know, you've got to start all over again. I can tell you that it's not, it's not something that anyone on the committee, nor on the, in the building group, the architect and the OPM are thinking that it's acceptable because they did the, the land piece already. So they fulfilled all of the obligations to MSBA. MSBA would have not let us move forward if we didn't do that particular portion.
I can hold the rest of my questions. I had my answers. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor C. Six, Councilor Mitchell.
Thank you. Kenny, let's cut to the chase. If we pass this resolution and we enact this resolution, what happens to BMC Durfee High?
I, I, without certainty, knowing the MSBA's thoughts, I, my personal opinion is the project will not move forward. Now, even if, even if, if you voted for it and it went somewhere, the timing is not going to be something that we can get done before this date. I personally, I don't know if we would be able to get it done in enough time to salvage the project at all. I, I do have to say, and it's my professional opinion in the position I sit in, but I don't have the credentials to go any further. So if this was a court of law, I'm sure I wouldn't be allowed to speak. But I'm going to say this because I know the amount of time that's been put into this. And 2013 to now is a long time. It's going to, we're going to build this project faster than we planned it. And that's okay, because we should take this much time to develop it. But the project, if the project doesn't happen, I don't know if we're going to get another opportunity with MSBA. I'm not sure that we're going to get another bite of the apple. There are a lot of communities that are already very concerned that Fall River is on building project number seven, when some of them have basically not even broken into the mix. MSBA's are very good to this city, and the eligibility part of this and the dollar amount that we're being offered as a reimbursement rate is very high. Now, it won't be that high because of the ineligible, but...
What is the reimbursement rate?
It's 80% of the eligible expenses.
Okay. Now, let me ask you another question. When the walkthrough was done, I believe it was told to the city at that time that they wanted to rehab this building, they could, but it would cost between 132 and 135.
That was the original, that was the original totals. That would be to renovate completely with a lot of, you know, extra pieces. As I was talking about earlier about the 30% rule, in order for us to bring this thing up to standards, roofs, HVAC, we're going to trigger all of those things. So we're going to have to bring the standards up, which means we're going to have to replace elevators, we're going to have to make most of our entrances and exits handicap accessible. There's a lot of issues at Durfee now that would have to be addressed before we could reoccupy it. And the one other thing is it would be phases. So the project would probably last three or four years because we don't have any swing space in order to have these students go elsewhere, like we did in other projects.
But I was led to believe that the state basically stated that they did not think that they would fund any part of a renovation. Was that correct?
They said they would not do a full renovation of that building.
Right.
They would, however, if we chose to be able to salvage either the auditorium or the gymnasium, the fieldhouse, that they would get involved in that renovation. Because the reason why we want to renovate the fieldhouse, and the reason why we wanted to renovate the auditorium, was neither one of those would be built to the size that they currently are. We're very fortunate to have that performing arts center that houses 1,400 people, 13 and change. They're only going to build a 750 as an auditorium. But the fieldhouse, it's a very large fieldhouse. MSBA is not interested in getting involved in the amount of money it takes to build a fieldhouse. So they'll do a renovation for us, new roof, HVAC, some amenities that we don't currently have that are code required, but they will not get involved in a full process. And the swimming pool is not a reimbursable item. So if the city is choosing to renovate that swimming pool, it's at full cost.
And many of these facilities that you're referring to, the auditorium, the gymnasium, the swimming pool, would, if we moved that building, we would lose all those amenities, basically, because the state would not put them in a new building. Is that not correct?
The state will put anything we want to pay for in a new building.
Yeah, but we will pay for it.
We will pay for it, yes.
But I'm saying they would not reimburse any of those costs.
They won't reimburse it where we are.
Right, exactly.
Right, exactly.
Right. And if we were to leave that location, we would also have to, we would also have to build new fields at a new location. Would that not be correct?
Or we would bus, or we would bus students.
Huh?
Or we would bus students to that site.
Or we would bus students back and forth to the fields.
If we didn't have the land, if we didn't have the appropriate amount of land in order to have those facilities elsewhere, yes.
So, so, again, cut to the chase, if we did this, the price of that school would increase quite a bit, quite substantially to have all the accommodations we have on Elsbury Street to move them to a new location.
That, along with the fact that MSBA is already putting out projections for 18, 19, and 2020 of the escalating construction costs. So MSBA, I think their reimbursement rate is, they reimburse $320, $325 per foot for a reimbursement rate. We're currently going to be in the $425 per square foot, and that's cheap compared to some of other communities that are going to have to deal with $500 a square foot. So this price is going up. There's more high schools being built right now across the state or in the pipeline, so the market is extremely tight. There are only so many contractors that can build buildings this big, and the market is kind of their market right now. So MSBA's made these predictions. So again, the longer we wait, the more we're going to pay in the end. And there are certain renovations in this building that we're going to struggle to make, make the building last until its time. I'm not saying that we won't. And again, if this is a project that the city does not decide to do, then we immediately have to amend that capital improvement plan to include the millions of dollars to get Durfee up to a...
And at this, we're at the 11th hour. I would say if we're not, we're darn close to it. And if we make changes now, we could lose the whole thing. Would that be...
I can't say for sure, but I'm, I'm saying that I don't, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the option that we may not make this. Because as I just said, I, we're going to spend a certain amount of money at the high school in order for it to be re-accredited through the NEASNC evaluation. That's coming up soon. So if we can't meet that accreditation, we have to do the renovations to make it happen. Now, the only thing that's, that's going to hold us off is going to be...
I think that's something that taxpayers of Fall River have to realize. If we do not meet accreditation, and we've already been basically told that that school is not a school that they would accredit, they would give accreditation to, there's got to be something done with that school. Is that correct?
The, the point is we will have to do something. If it's not this, we're going to have to make some renovations to the, to the building so that it will pass that. And I'm not quite sure how quickly we would do that. I'm guessing as soon as you start a project, you may be able to have a stay, so to speak, on the regulations, but the project will turn into a major renovation, and we may not have any participation from anyone else.
Well, I think that school was a failure right from the very beginning, and I agree with my colleague in seat three when he says it was. I was, at the time, there was a move to dedicate that building. I chose not to vote for that. I was the only one that didn't because I felt that that building was designed poorly. There was all kinds of problems with that building right from the get-go, and those problems exist to this very day. Would you agree?
The, the building is probably obsolete when it was built, so...
Yep. So for those reasons, I would say that we should be moving forward, and I personally will have to vote against this because I really believe, I understand the sponsors' reasoning, but at the same time, I think we're, we're at the 11th hour, and we need to basically move forward in this city, and that is building a new high school, I think is part of that. Because if we do not build a new high school, we're going to have ma- major renovations up there on Elsbury Street, and I'm going to tell you, those renovations are going to come directly out of taxpayers' pockets, where now we can get an 80% reimbursement. And I believe that this community should basically take advantage of what we've got and take advantage of that 80% reimbursement. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Councilor C. Five, Councilor Long.
I'm all set. Just move the question.
Move the question. Was there a second?
Move the question.
Seconded by Council Mitchell. Move the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Roll call.
Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Stifling debate.
Move the question.
Councilor Kavaseras?
No.
Joseph Kamara? Stephen Kamara?
No.
Lellaby LeBeau?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Ferreira?
Yes.
Ponte? President Kade?
Yes.
On the motion which was made by councillor Kamara, seconded by councillor Kavaseras, all those in favor?
Could you repeat it?
Roll call.
What is the motion?
The motion was to adopt.
Did you want to talk on the motion?
Yeah, but I can't, can't call them.
Mr. President, that failed.
No, passed. Move the question passed.
There were three noes, four ayes.
Yes, move the question.
So move the question was...
There has to be five, right?
I moved the question.
Move the question.
That doesn't, we have, it's a majority. Move the question, it's a simple majority.
Simple majority.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilor Kavaseras?
Motion to amend. I would like to remove the second, be it further resolved, that, that any vote...
Counselor, we're in the middle of a roll call.
You can't amend it.
I can't amend it at this point in time?
Roll call.
No.
Joseph Kamara? Stephen Kamara?
Objection.
Thank you, Ms. Chico. Madam Clerk.
Oh, Ms. Council President, could we take item 14 under, out of order? I believe that's what these gentlemen, I was waiting for, are you waiting for the curb cut? The curb cut for Dover Street?
Motion to take item number 14 out of order was, was made by councillor LeBeau, seconded by councillor Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so voted, motion carries. Madam Clerk, item 14.
Item 14 is the request for a curb cut by John Mandonca at 45 Dover Street to remove 10 feet.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
This, item number 14 is the petition of John Mandonca at 45 Dover Street to remove curbing, 10 feet of curbing for a total driveway access of 20 feet.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt was made by councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Perr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so voted, motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Whereas the city council recently approved forwarding a proposed plan to locate six electronic 70 by 50 digital billboards at these locations, Easterly end of Bedford Street, south of Central Street, west of 79, north of Father de Valle's Boulevard, Fourth Street, corner of Hartwell Street, north side of Brayton Avenue, corner of Route 195 ramp, Market Street facing South Main Street. Whereas the city council's vote was based on this proposal returning to the city council after receiving approval from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts review process, and whereas it was not presented at the time of the city council vote, that before going to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for a review process, these proposed locations would be going before the Fall River Zoning Board of Appeals for special permits. And whereas it is now understood that the ZBA approval of these special permits will give the city of Fall River the convincing argument to this Commonwealth of Massachusetts review process that Fall River has thoroughly vetted these proposals. And whereas there has been no public presentation of what these billboards will look like and how they will affect the neighborhoods in which they would be constructed, should the process move forward. And whereas Photoshop and other technological advances can produce a virtual reality of what these billboards would look like, should the process move forward, now therefore be it resolved that the Fall River City Council strongly advises the Fall River Zoning Board of Appeals that it should give these items leave to withdraw, and that the Fall River City Council holds a public hearing on these proposed billboards and any other proposed billboards that may be considered, though they may not need ZBA approval, so that the city council and the people of Fall River may understand the full impact of these digital billboards on Fall River and the neighborhoods in which they are intended to be constructed.
Move adoption.
Second. Motion to move the adoption was made by councillor Kavaseras, seconded by councillor Stephen Kamara. Discussion, councillor C. Three.
Just briefly, because I know there's a need to move on. However, we were assured, at least I felt assured, that the process last time that it was before the council, that there would be a vote, that vote was seven to two, myself, seat three, my colleague in seat one opposed, that it was going to go to the state, but the state was just going to give their opinion, and it was going to come back to us, and then there would be another process then to move forward. When something goes before the zoning board of appeals, because I've been through the zoning board of appeals process, when you get their approval, you've got approval to move forward. And I feel like this is somewhat of a case of not enough information on the first go round, maybe it was intended to be clean and clear. I've never seen, and there's no reason why, on that screen that's right in front of us, that there couldn't be a photograph of Government Center and where those billboards are in relationship to Government Center. One of them is supposed to be facing South Main Street. Is it going to be on Grammata Plaza? Is it going to be someplace else? What's it going to look like? What's it going to look like coming from the highway? So many, so much information. In the, in the upper Bedford Street, again, our historic water tower, is it going to be blocking the water tower from view? Is it going to be jutting out to be viewed from those vehicles that are, is it going to compete with the water up upon as a place to look at? What's it going to do to the neighborhood? What's it going to do to the other neighborhoods that it's a part of? I don't know. I'm buying a pig and a poke with this thing if it goes forward, and I don't want it to go forward, and I would ask for unanimous support from this council so that I may go to the zoning board of appeals, and I would ask others to join me in going to the zoning board of appeals, and ask them to give it leave to withdraw, send it back to the council so we can have the full-blown hearing. I don't want this council, or even a future council, to be known as the council that buried its head in the sand or didn't understand what was before it, and then all of a sudden we see, and I've heard now eight from Mr. Carrick, eight billboards, with, this refers to six billboards. Where are the other two? Where are those going? Again, a full discussion. I haven't pressed with all of the sites because I always felt it was going to come back to us after it went to the state. Aside... Aside from that, I think it's very interesting that we have both Mr. Al Lima and a representative from the Carrick family both united on requesting this because they were opponents on the issue that related to the Alfred J. Lima Quikashan River Rail Trail and the buy-and-bypass and go-and-not-go situation that we had there. But now they're united. And there's many other people that are interested in a full discussion on this. I ask for unanimous support for this resolution. I yield.
Counselor in seat four.
Thank you. Counsel Kamara, Counselor in seat three is correct. We were told, both in ordinance and in full council, that this was just for the state to approve or not approve so that everyone else didn't waste their time on us... Working on a site that the state might not approve. So, I spoke to Mrs. Viveras yesterday, and she had stated that what would happen, zoning board would possibly approve it, the state would approve it, it would come back, they'd do the RFPs, it would go out, they'd put the numbers together, and then that would come in front of the council. But to me, that seems like doing a lot of work by other people, possibly, on something the council might not approve. And I'm not sure that it sits right with me that it would come back to us in a package with all of... The financial information is great, but I don't want it to be seen as, you know, take this billboard or are you going to lose all these... This revenue and put us up against the wall. My question on the process is, does it have to be a leave to withdraw? Could we ask them to table it until we had a public hearing? And then could that public hearing be... Could we give that a timeline, a quick timeline to happen so that it doesn't... I'm not... I'm not opposed to the billboards. I've supported it all along. But I do agree with Counselor in seat three. The process that was told to us is not exactly what's happening here. So, if we ask them to table it, does that not send as strong a message as you would like this through the President to Counsel in seat three? And if they are to give it leave to withdraw, does it then have to start all over again? I'm just not clear on the process. I don't want to vote on something that's going to take it back too many steps.
I'll turn it over to Counselor in seat three. But the ZBA is required to notify butters of a public hearing.
So, they were notified a week ago?
So, they would have to know when it was going to be lifted from the table to make sure that people that want to speak on the matter can be in attendance. But Counselor in seat three.
I think you're right, Mr. President. And I just suggested, in fact, I think this wording strongly advises, ultimately, the ZBA can do what it wants if it decides that it will... In its wisdom, that it doesn't want to give leave to withdraw, it wants to table, it wants to postpone action. They can do, as any independent body can do, they can do whatever they choose. So, I just felt that it was important enough to get a clean slate. Let's get to where we were told we were supposed to be. And this would do that. I yield.
Counselor in seat four.
So, I'm not sure that I have a clear answer there on if they would give it leave to withdraw, does it automatically come back to us?
I meant it if you choose.
Oh, I'm just... I just wanted a clear answer on the process.
Well, it doesn't automatically come back to us. We'd have to get it... We'd have to put a resolution back on the floor because...
But we wouldn't have to start the whole process over through ordinance, would we?
Well, the ZBA could refer it right back to the City Council. It could be a motion to refer it right back to the City Council. And then it comes back before us.
Okay. Yeah, I know. All right. Okay. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Counselor in seat seven?
I feel that, again, this...
Your mic.
I feel, again, this was a bad situation where we were told at the Ordinance Committee that it was going to come to council, and the only thing we were voting on was that it was going to the state. When the state approved whichever billboards, then it would come back to the council for discussion. So, how it got to the ZBA board, I don't know. I certainly would... I don't know when the board is going to be meeting on this. I don't know.
Thursday.
This Thursday?
Yeah, the 16th.
Then I think that, you know, we should... I'll attend. I'll attend. I think that this is just another one of those not giving all the information. And that becomes frustrating because I don't even know if the ZBA... Do they have a full board through the President to the clerk? How many members on that board at this point?
Madam Clerk.
Is it the zoning board or the... That doesn't have the necessary members?
No, I believe they do, and they have alternate members as well.
Supposed to be five or something? And so, which is it? Is it...
I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that they do have.
Could you check on that? Because I know one of them has been short members for quite some time. Maybe it's planning. Just check on that. I will support my colleague in seat number three on this issue. Thank you. I yield.
Any further discussion?
Move the question.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so voted, motion carries unanimously.
Next.
I have a citation for Andrew Kozinski.
Move adoption.
Second.
Motion to adopt. The citation was made by Counselor Cavasarez, seconded by Counsel Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so voted, motion carries.
Item 13 as well. I don't know, but 13 is also a citation.
Move adoption.
Second.
Motion to adopt was made by Counselor Cavasarez, seconded by Counsel Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so voted, motion carries.
Can we do 15, 16, and 17?
Together? Motion made?
Motion to take items 15, 16, and 17 together was made by Counsel Perrer, seconded by Counsel Cavasarez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so voted, motion carries.
Motion to adopt after read.
Motion to adopt was made by Counsel Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Perrer. Madam Clerk, will you read them?
We have the Chicara Realty Corp. at 32 Doyle Street for the removal of 32 feet of curbing at 168 Eighteenth Street. We have Manuel Olivera, 200 Bullock Street, for a total of 33 feet at 200 Bullock Street. And Mark Belloza, 350 Eldridge Street, for a total of 28 feet at 350 Eldridge.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so voted, motion carries.
We have the request for a joint pole location on Stafford Road on behalf of Mass Electric and Verizon New England.
Move adoption. Motion to adopt was made by Counselor Cavasarez, seconded by Counsel Perrer. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so voted, motion carries.
Ordered that the administration instruct Corporation Council to petition the court to remove the approved easement that crosses the Alfred J. Lima Quikashan River Rail Trail to ensure that the approved easement is null and void.
Move adoption.
Second.
Motion to adopt was made by Counselor Cavasarez, seconded by Counsel Perrer. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so voted, motion carries.
Item number 20 is the fiscal year 2018 tax factor. This would be adopting the residential factor.
Of 1.72.
Move to...
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt 1.75 as the residential factor.
Motion to adopt the tax shift at 1.75 was made by Counsel Kamara. Is there a second? Seeing no, second?
Move to adopt 1.70 as the factor.
Motion to adopt 1.0... 1.70 as the tax shift, is there?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel LaBeau. Discussion? Counselor in seat one.
Again, the best way to be able to invest in our city is to make sure that people have the ability to get jobs. So, if we invest in businesses, we'll generate more tax revenue as time goes on. So, to say that we're going to save people $30, $40, or keep it where it is and they saved $30 over the past two years, I think it's disingenuous because what ends up happening is they're going to end up losing money and pay more taxes long-term. So, I think it's important to start setting the trend, sending the message to businesses that we mean business here. We want you to come to the city. We want you to succeed, and we're going to continue to work with you by bringing down 1.7. I yield.
Counselor in seat three.
I will oppose this shift back to the residential taxpayer. The residential taxpayer is up against the wall. The elders that are trying to hold on to their homes are up against the wall. Mr. Fallon was one individual before us, a retired teacher who teachers are generally considered to be a faller of his middle class. He's struggling to move forward in his retirement. In this report that was given to us by the Chamber of Commerce of the top 100 cities to start a business, Fall River was listed as the top city in New England. So, obviously, our tax factor that we adopted a year ago has not affected Fall River from being the top city in New England for starting a business. This didn't come from me. It came from, I believe, the Chamber of Commerce dropped this on our desk today. So, let's face it, this is not the factor that's going to determine what businesses come to Fall River. But this factor will give a bit of relief to our beleaguered taxpayer who's going to be facing exorbitant water bill increases as a result of the adoption of the question that was just adopted on our ballot. Let's give the beleaguered residential taxpayer a little bit of relief. And I would ask that if we don't do the 1.75, let's at least approach it. And I would leave it to the council to decide what would be fair, but certainly, let's not go backwards. We're at 1.71, is that correct?
1.72.
Set 1.72. Let's not go any further back than 1.72. And I hope it's closer to 1.75. But I won't support anything that's not 1.72 or higher. I yield.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
What is the factor?
1.70.
1.70 tax shift.
Counselors Cavasarez?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Lalebi LaBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mitchell?
No.
Carrera?
No.
Ponti?
President Kadine?
Yes.
What was the...
Four.
Motion carries. Four, three.
The tab is at 1.70.
1.70.
So, the average tax bill will go up by 10%?
10%? No.
No.
Maybe $10.
I can't. $10 a dollar.
Folks, folks.
Just let me plug in these other numbers. Three, nine, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Did you get it?
Yes. And so, the order adopting the FY 2018 tax levy, the residential Class 1 will be at 62.0228, commercial Class 3 at 22.1483, industrial Class 4 at 9.9106, and personal property Class 5 at 5.9184.
Now, this has to be adjusted, too.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Long. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel LaBeau. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Motion.
Cut. I'm sorry. Discussion, Counselor in seat one.
Now, since this has been changed, since we've changed the tax factor, wouldn't we have to naturally adjust the levy as well?
No.
That's what it just said.
So, that's with the adjusted levy at 1.7?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for the clarification.
That was the pause.
All right.
She was doing the math.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Adoption, Counselors Cavasarez?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Lalebi LaBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mitchell?
No.
Carrera?
No.
Ponti?
And President Kadine?
Yes.
Have the police chiefs report?
Accept and place on file after reading the names of new tax drivers.
Motion to accept and place on file was made by Counsel Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you read the names?
We have Cappy Carrera, Deena Feldman, Mikhail Rapoza, Richard DeRozes, Jose Goncalo, Joshua Schilbury, Marin Epic, Angel Morris, Santini Johnson, and Rodney Smith.
All those in... Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so voted, motion carries.
Item number 23, any of them have an objection? No.
Move adoption. After the names are read.
Motion to adopt...
All license renewals.
All license renewal for auto repair was made by Counsel Perrer, seconded by Counsel Mitchell. Discussion on any of those? Counselor in seat one.
Didn't... Wasn't there guidance from...
Yes, thank you.
Saying that you don't have to read all the names now?
Yes.
All right. I yield.
Oh.
I sent it to you.
Trying to save the clerk a little bit of work.
Okay. I have no problem.
We advertise them in the... By placing them on the agenda. And so, they're posted to the website. So, the guidance we received from the Division of Open Government was that we don't have to read all of the names.
Okay. I was just trying to prevent a person from going to the Ethics Commission saying we violated...
You just wanted to hear her read because she's been doing such a tremendous job with all these resolutions.
I like the way she reads.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so voted, motion carries.
Item 24, are the renewals of auto body shop licenses?
Are there any objections? Motion to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt was made by Counselor Mitchell, seconded by Counsel Perrer. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so voted, motion carries.
Item 25 to 29.